It's here. A little reminder, we got the old speaking system here. When you want to talk, push the button, get the green light and shut it off when you're not, when you're done. Thank you all very much. And at this point, Kevin, why don't you go ahead and get things started?
Absolutely. Can everybody hear me? Okay. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of School Board, Members of City Council. My name is Kevin Schadler, and today you're going to be receiving a presentation on the combined city school five-year forecast. So it's going to be a presentation by committee today. So out of the gate first is going to be Greg Ruten Doris. He's the Chief Economist for the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. And then I'll come back up briefly after that and speak about projection of real estate, or excuse me, the general fund revenues, as well as baseline assumptions and expenditures. LJ Hansen, the city's Public Works Director, will be coming up, giving a briefing on waste management and stormwater enterprise funds. Bob Montague from Public Utilities will be giving a briefing on the sewer and water enterprise funds. And then Crystal Pate with Schools will be closing us out with their five-year forecast projection. So with that being said, I will turn it over to Greg Ruten Doris.
Well, that was a good entrance. Good afternoon, everyone. A pleasure to be here again in front of you. Kevin asked me to kind of kick this off and provide a bit of a broader perspective on the economy, what's going on. And I'll start, as I have before, with a look at the national economy, if I can figure out how to work this. All right, we'll try the arrows instead. Feel free to ask any questions as I go through this. Hopefully, it's pretty straightforward. But typically in Hampton Roads, you know, what happens at the national economy is relevant to what happens here, especially as we look at the out years and what's coming up. And when we're looking at the national economy, that what you have in front of you here is national gross product, the actual GDP is the red line, the potential GDP is the blue line. And so what we're looking at is when do we deviate from the potential gross product? So essentially, when is the economy underperforming or actually overperforming when we look at that blue line? If we go back, we could see the Great Recession back in 2008, 2009, and we could see how long it took to recover those jobs. And then we see the COVID recession, very different in how it looks. It jumped way down and popped back up pretty quick. And if I can get you to look at just the last couple of quarters here in 2022, you can see that we actually had a couple of years, or a couple of quarters of decline in GDP. And the last quarter, third quarter, we jumped up to 2.6. But two, it was a bit of a surprise to people, why is GDP declining? And why did they not call a recession when we had two quarters of GDP decline? But you can see just how the national economy has been performing here. The reason that we have not seen, why we didn't get a recession called on us for two consecutive quarters of negative growth, is because employment has just been killing it. If you look at this red line here, that's a long-term average of how many new jobs we get every month. It's around 133,000. These are the headline numbers that you see reported once a month that talk about how many jobs we're getting. The blue bars is what we've seen since January of 2021. We're performing at almost four times the long-term average in terms of employment growth. So the employment numbers that we've been seeing coming in paint a very different perspective, paint a very different picture than what we've seen with gross regional product, gross domestic product. And that's why we have not had a recession called. But you can see that in the last three months, the employment numbers have not been quite as strong as they were previously. And this is a cause for concern when we're moving forward. If we look at the national economy real quickly in terms of pre-COVID versus now, what industries are doing better and what industries do in worse? Certainly, it's different across industrial sectors in terms of, you know, winners and losers. And I want you to look at the bottom here, leisure and hospitality. Nationally, leisure and hospitality has been really, really hurting ever since COVID. And so that's been a struggle nationally. If you look at the top there, professional service, transportation, warehousing, even retail trade, information, manufacturing, those are sectors that have seen strong growth and are really buoying the nation's employment levels up. So that's the national level. What does it look like in Hampton Roads? When we dial it in a bit, the black line here is the United States, the orange is Virginia, and green is Hampton Roads. And this basically indexes employment all the way back to 2005. So again, you can see the Great Recession and the varied experience from the Great Recession to the COVID recession. It took us a long, long time to dig ourselves out of the Great Recession. And for the U.S. and Virginia, they did it in a little over six years, seven years. For Hampton Roads, it took us 10 years to dig out of the Great Recession. And now you look at Hampton Roads, and once again, we're having a different experience than the nation and even the state in recovering out of COVID. The region is struggling. If you look at just the, since going back to January of 2020, rather, you can see the black line again is the U.S., orange is Virginia, and you can see Hampton Roads hasn't quite recovered all their jobs. In fact, we're about 12,000 jobs short of where we were pre-COVID, all these months later. The state and the nation have since recovered the jobs. Virginia is just above, it's 0.3% above pre-COVID. U.S. is 0.8% above COVID, but Hampton Roads is 1.4% behind where we were pre-COVID. So after struggling to recover from the Great Recession, now we're also struggling to recover from the COVID recession. So I showed you how industrial sector employment looked at the national level. This is what it looks like in Hampton Roads. And if you look in the bottom there, local government, this has been a problem in the region for some time. And it's not because we are shedding jobs and we're letting people go. Regionally, we're just having an incredibly difficult time hiring people. And the job vacancies across the region are staggering because it's really hard to attract people in this region to local government from other regions across the country. Quite frankly, we just don't pay what other places are paying. So what we do is we move people around the region, and we steal people from different localities. But we're not pulling people from Charlotte, we're not pulling people from DC. We don't have an advantage there for people to come into this region. And that's why local government here is shedding an exorbitant amount of jobs. We're actually having people lured away to different metropolitan areas. If you look on the bottom end there, too, you'll see manufacturing and retail. This is a little bit different than what we're experiencing at the federal level. So we aren't losing jobs in the same fashion as the federal level. But moving up on the scale in the middle, or just above the middle, you'll see leisure and hospitality. Leisure and hospitality, that showed the biggest decrease at the federal level. Hampton Roads is doing quite well comparatively, really well comparatively. And Virginia Beach especially is doing well. Virginia Beach is outperforming the region and lifting the region up in capacity. But leisure and hospitality is one place that this region is excelling, where the nation is struggling. If you look at the top there, you'll see healthcare, transportation utilities, you know, construction has been strong in this region. You may have noticed all these construction projects going on across the region. $5.8 billion worth of construction right now on our roadways, the second highest in the nation. So there is a lot of construction and a lot of work going on that is helping us. Was there a question? Oh, sorry, I thought I saw him. I'll talk just briefly about unemployment rates. You may have heard me say in the past that unemployment rates are rather useless statistic to look at. The trends here are what's more interesting and important. And what you can see here is the U.S., Hampton Roads, and Virginia are all following the same trends. The trends that they follow are pretty much, you know, this is the standard unemployment rate. There's multiple ways you can look at unemployment rates, but the trends are all going in the same direction. So if you look at this, and you look at the green line Hampton Roads, you could, you know, make the assumption that we're fine, everything's back to normal after COVID. Our unemployment rates are relatively low, just under 4%. But if we look at the labor force a little bit differently here, that black line is what the labor force was at prior to COVID. The blue line is our actual labor force, with the green line our employment levels. But you can see that our labor force is shrinking. And when the labor force shrinks, we can have a lower unemployment rate, but that's certainly not necessarily good for our economy. So we've seen people drop out of the labor force when COVID hit for a number of reasons. Childcare was one of the big ones. But for a number of reasons, people left the labor force, and they haven't returned. And when they don't return, then certainly the economy struggles there. With respect to the unemployment, the number of people unemployed, while the number is low, it's still much higher than it was prior to COVID. Population histogram, you know, back in third or fourth grade, those on the school board would know when they actually teach that this is supposed to look like a pyramid, a triangle. That's certainly not what our population histogram looks like. And so we see that, you know, instead of having a high number of people in the younger years, the 5 to 15, we have very few children come in. And this is not just a phenomenon in Hampton Roads. Certainly, this is national and even international, where we're seeing low birth rates, declining birth rates continuing. But Hampton Roads is especially different with respect to the population histogram. We see the bulge in the middle there that reflects the military personnel that we have in our region, and even some of the baby boom. But this is a little bit of a different population histogram than we're used to. And demographics defines your destiny. So if we're looking at our demographics here, we can see that we're probably not going to see strong population growth coming in the future. We have not had strong population growth in the past. So if we're not growing, and we're seeing our labor force shrinking, then that kind of defines somewhat our destiny as a region looking forward. Unless we bring people into the region, unless we bring new jobs into this region, then it's not likely that we're going to see anything strong with respect to population growth. Just briefly, I wanted to touch on taxes, what's going on here. Virginia is very antiquated with respect to its tax structure. And this is something that really hasn't bothered localities recently, because things have been going pretty well, or have been perceived to go pretty well. If you look at the Hampton Road sales taxes, this is a retail tax that we're pulling in, and you look at the light blue, it looks like we're doing pretty well, annualized growth rate of 3.3%. If you adjust for inflation, it's much less, it's 0.78%. But you can see how much retail tax jumped up during COVID. And there's a couple of factors that led to that. One was the Supreme Court case ruling that really allowed us, enabled us to tax all the internet sales that we weren't able to before. And so that brought us up to where we were. And what happened also with COVID is, if you remember, you couldn't go out and do anything, so you couldn't go out and get services done. So you bought stuff when you sat at home, and Amazon was doing really, really well, everybody purchasing things, and we were taxing it. So boom, up went retail sales. So people weren't really complaining about our antiquated sales tax because it was doing them well. But the sales tax that we pull in as a region and across the state, it's hit its peak. There's really nowhere else for it to grow. So I would expect that in the years to come, this is really going to flatten out and even decline, certainly as we adjust for the high inflation rates that we're seeing. So where we've been doing well in the past, pulling in sales tax revenue, I wouldn't expect it to continue to the future. One of the things that we've been seeing as well on the national level is people are moving back from goods to services, right? Once we opened up the economy back and people could actually enjoy services, then they moved from buying things that, you know, extra clothes and whatever, because, you know, COVID wasn't great for me. But you start going back into services, you start going back to gyms, you start getting haircuts and all that stuff. And one of the things that we don't do in this state is we don't tax services. So where you do pay tax on a diaper, you do not pay tax on getting your hair done. And if we actually tax services, we could lower the tax rate by a great deal and remain revenue neutral. So one of the things I'm always advocating for our localities is, you know, we need to address Virginia's antiquated tax structure if we want to move into the future. Tax modernization will be extremely important. I'll talk just briefly on the housing market. I know that you'll hear a little bit more about this later. But a lot has gone on in the housing market. If you go back, you can see all the way, you know, through the early part 2000s, where we saw the huge housing boom, green line again is Hampton Roads. And we had a bigger boom here than the state had and the nation had. Then we dropped, and we struggled for some time. And unexpectedly, we hit another housing boom. So housing prices went up, and we saw housing prices went up, property values went up, and retail sales went up. Things are great for the localities. There's lots of revenue coming in all across Virginia. It's fantastic. So now we're seeing mortgage rates went up above 7%, right? That, if you want to cool the housing market, that's one way to do it. Fed Reserve is pumping up interest rates to try and address inflation. They're probably going to, you know, they're going to do another interest rate raise likely this December. But those interest rates going up are putting pressure on unemployment, they're putting pressure on inflation, and they're also cooling the housing market. So housing prices don't respond quickly. People in the real estate industry will tell you this, housing prices are downward sticky. So if your house got up to value at $350,000, and all of a sudden the housing market drops out, you don't want to sell it for $340,000. You still think it should be 350, right? People love to ride housing prices up, they don't like to ride them down. So they don't sell their houses, housing prices become sticky, and they stay there. But what you've already seen in the real estate market is it changed from, you know, you want to buy my house, you're not allowed to inspect it, to I'll pay for the inspection, I'll fix everything you need fixed, I'll even buy down your points. So the market has shifted. Housing prices will probably remain somewhat stable, they could come down a little bit. But certainly, the growth that we saw on the boom is over and probably will be over for some time again. Looking towards the future, there's a lot going on here. Economists are notoriously bad at forecasts, but they continue to do it anyways. This forecast here comes to us from Blue Chip. So these are the smartest economists around the country who get together and try to look in their crystal ball, and then they get it wrong. But I'm putting it in front of you anyways. So the blue bar is actual GDP growth rates, and the orange is forecasted growth rates through the end of 2024. And what you'll see is that this fourth quarter, which is the first orange bar, that's the fourth quarter of 2022, they're actually forecasting negative growth for the first two quarters of 2023. There's a slowdown happening internationally, there's a slowdown happening in the U.S. We're seeing the employment rates come down, we're seeing the tech companies shed jobs. There's a lot of concern about what's going on. So we might be looking at a soft recession coming in 2023. Hopefully, not a deep one, but there certainly is a slowdown. A lot of factors going on at the international level play into this, of course. Russia and Ukraine is a big part of that. But certainly, there is a softening of the economy, and we'll probably expect to see employment growth slow down. Unfortunately, Hampton Roads saw employment drop in October already. I hope that's not a bellwether. But looking forward, things certainly are going to cool. There are a lot of ongoing regional initiatives that I'll point out quickly. As I mentioned before, $5.8 billion in transportation infrastructure project. That's pretty huge considering, you know, the region got together and paid for these construction projects themselves. But it makes construction costs go up. But good time to do it. We have an interconnected regional fiber network that we're really trying to take advantage of and get ourselves set for the future. There's a Birthplace of America Trail that we're working on across the region to connect us with the Capital Trail in Richmond. We've really changed, I mean, this region really changed how the state looked at economic development site readiness. A couple of years ago, we realized that we were trying to sell goods from an empty cart. We had no sites available. So we're trying to convince people, companies, to come in here and build here. And they're looking as of where. So we're really, regionally, we changed the game, and we forced the state to kind of change that and make some investments to get sites ready so that we can actually be attractive to companies coming in from the outside. We're really trying to work to develop the offshore wind supply chain. We have a competitive advantage there, and we're trying to maximize that as best we can. There's a regional revenue sharing model that we're working on so that we, you know, growth that happens in one locality can be shared across localities. There are several federal initiatives on the peninsula. Jefferson Labs has a very exciting opportunity in front of it, and that pays dividends across the region. And then we have a restructured regional model for economic development. I think that's much better suited to where we are today. So that's some of the exciting things that we have going on regionally, and hopefully that can change our destiny and the trajectory of us moving forward. That's all the comments I have. Kevin, do you want me to take questions, or?
Any questions? Yeah, John?
There are just a few questions that I'll pose today.
Your mic's on?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'll get closer to where I'm at.
There we go.
Just a few questions. I have others, but I'll post those to the city manager. But you mentioned one thing about our ability to recruit and retain because our pay is poor. But I think you want to expand that, because if you look at the indexes where 100 equals an average, it is true that the average salary, private and public sector, excluding the federal sector, is lower than 100. But our cost of living is at 112, 113 on that same index. If you go to Charlotte, you're going to find they're very close, a little over 100, but their cost of living's like about 105, 106 on that same index. So it isn't just that our wages are low, that the cost of living in our area, the gap between where we are on the wage index and where we are on the cost of living index is much broader, much wider than other localities that you cited. So you might want to just take a look to see what the explanatory variable isn't just the pay, it's the delta between the pay and the cost of living in the locality on that same broad index. I think you'll find some interesting trends there and differences. I don't think it's just the pay, it's that the pay doesn't go as far, given the higher cost of living, and our local residents feel that. So that's just one observation I would offer. The other one you mentioned, I know this was in a regional state of the region report, this is when Dr. Cook was still very much involved, and you may recall, he talked about, if we want to raise the incomes of families, we're going to have to have more people go to work. I'm sure that's not the first time you've heard that. So when you look at the relationship of labor force and household income, which you didn't directly, so if we're underperforming on labor, which means also the household labor participation and income is lower, then that's going to impact transactional revenues, because there's less income relative to the family's requirements over time. So they're less rich, if you want to be a positive term, than they were before when inflation was lower, but household participation was roughly the same. So I think that's an observation we need to think about when we talk about what kind of financial stress families are under. They're facing higher financial requirements, but they have really less real-term income, which the report talks about. And the last thing I want to talk about is the tax structure. I'm glad you mentioned that, because you mentioned it last year. It's interesting that states that don't tax income at all, not like they lower it, but don't tax it at all, or like Tennessee doesn't tax active or passive income and relies totally on transactional revenues, are having stronger income growth, stronger employment growth, and stronger business attractiveness. So rather than saying revenue neutral and keeping income taxed, if we want to talk about really where the leaders are, it's doing away with wealth taxes and relying on transactional revenues that move with the economy. I do think wealth taxes do impede economic growth. And also, you didn't mention rent, and that's my last point, Mr. Mayor, is on rent. As housing prices, our inventory doesn't grow. National Home Building Association says we're in recession, and they're right. So the inventory of houses doesn't grow, and no one wants to give up their 3% loan to go buy a higher house, but people still are forming houses, that's pressure on the rental market. And Virginia Beach was in the top 10 cities for rent increases, average rent increase. So I hope in the future, maybe someone else is going to address this, but we are really putting additional pressure on the rental market, which is generally the people that are at the bottom quintiles of the economic structure. They're the most pressured by rent increases. So I do think in the future, we are going to have to address what is happening to the larger and growing rental population relative to growth in rents.
Thank you for those comments. I can address just a couple of them real quick, and they kind of actually loop back to each other. One of the reasons we do have such high costs, high cost of living in the region is because of rents. Our housing costs are very high here. And one of the reasons our housing costs are high here is because we're not building and we're not adding to the housing stock. When you limit supply, cost goes up. So that is one of the components that, you know, when you talk about recruiting and how far our dollar goes here, we pay a lot in rent, we pay a lot in housing costs, and we have a housing affordability crisis in this region. We've had one for some time. So this is consistent, and it's something that we absolutely need to address. But you're correct in saying our dollar does not go as far here as it should, which makes recruiting that much more difficult. If you want to recruit, you have to have a dollar that goes far enough competitive with other regions. With respect to the labor force, we know that one of the reasons that people dropped out of the labor force was because of the lack of access to childcare. There was, on the peninsula, there was a study of small businesses, and they said, what's the number one issue facing small businesses on the peninsula? And they said childcare. We don't have access to childcare. And when you don't have access to childcare, people pull out of the labor force. So if you want to increase your labor force, you have to increase the things that enable people to be in the labor force. And one of those is childcare. Of course, there's other components to that as well. But that certainly, if you increase the number of people in your labor force, you expand the labor force, you increase income, you increase quality of life, well, some components of quality of life. With respect to transactional taxes, it's a very good point about Tennessee. What we've long advocated for taxes is you want a basket of taxes that is low and broad-based. You don't want to focus just on a few taxes because it gets easily to distort tax revenue and what you pull in. So you want a broad variety of taxes that are low-based, and you don't want to just pin everything on one tax. We don't do well with transactional taxes in Virginia, but we desperately need modernization to bring down some of the higher rates that we have, remove some of the benefits that certain groups have that increase prices, increase taxes for everybody else, and bring this basket lower and make it much more equitable than it is now. So.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks a bunch, Greg. Appreciate it. And welcome to the beach.
All right. Hello again. Okay, so I feel like Greg did a pretty good job, a really good job of covering the economic information related to the region. So included in the five-year forecast documents, the document tried to work from the regional level that Greg had covered down to a little bit more localized level. And there's some demographic information included within that document. But for the purpose of today's presentation, I'm going to skip forward and jump into looking at some revenues and what we're seeing and these trends look like over the next several years. So starting with real estate revenue, the city's largest local revenue source, which represents about 50% of the general funds revenues. Certainly, most important to us, we're very mindful of this. So if I can just take a moment to familiarize everybody with the graph, because all the revenue charts are going to look similar to this. So the yellow line or the orange line going across represents the actual amount collected for each of those fiscal years. There's a blue line hidden behind that yellow line, that's the budgeted amount for that given year. And then the green line going out is the forward-looking projection of that revenue source. So as I was saying, this revenue is very important to the city, so we're very mindful of it. We work closely with the Real Estate Assessor's Office in projecting this. So based on feedback from the Real Estate Assessor's Office, we're anticipating 9.3% growth in assessments in FY '24. The forward-looking projections, as Greg noted earlier, is anticipated to decline. The forward-looking projections, as Greg noted earlier, is anticipated to decline. Year-to-year assessment growth over that period, much for the very reason Greg was talking about, with the recent rate, interest rate increases being close to 8%, 30, for a 30-year fixed mortgage, it's anticipated to cool the market quite a bit. So year-to-year, we're anticipating growth of this revenue source by about $47 million within the general fund. Several things that we look at whenever we're looking at real estate projections and we work with to gather information is, one of the things we're mindful of are the number of foreclosures. As you can see in this chart here, foreclosures in 2021 were less than 100 between both the foreclosures and the foreclosure sales. You can see that's just an indication of a red-hot housing market within the area. Foreclosures, as everybody knows, kind of a double-edged sword, right? So if somebody gets a bargain out of the deal, probably gets into a home they otherwise couldn't have afforded. But for the comparable sales around the region, if you have one, it's not probably a big deal, but you get too many, it can actually act as a depreciating effect on the surrounding homes. So that's what happened in 2010 when in 2011, we had 1,300 foreclosure sales occur. It resulted in a negative depreciation the following year. Something else that we're mindful of are the exemption programs that we have in place. So anybody who was able to do the quick math on that first slide might have noted, hey, a $47 million increase is not 9%, it's actually 7%. So there's several things that go into projecting real estate revenues, including current year collection rate, prior year collections, but also being mindful of the exemptions, like I was saying. So this graph or this chart here covers two of the exemption programs and provides a little bit additional background information for those. Top one being the elderly and disabled program. This is a local option for a tax exemption program that the city of Virginia Beach had in place for many years. You can see dating back since 2016, enrollment within this program has actually declined somewhat. The exemption amount for the, in terms of the value, the tax is exempted, has varied, ranging in between $11 million and $13 million. Individuals who enroll in this program meet certain criteria, age eligibility, income requirements, and it's within the discretion and control of the city of Virginia Beach or locality as to what the parameters of that program look like. The second program, tax exemption program, the disabled veterans, that's a mandated program. That's not within the control of the city. So as you can see, the enrollment in that dating back 2016, close to about 1,100 people. In FY '24, we're anticipating this to grow to just over 5,100. Looking at the exemption amount in 2016 was about $2.9 million and FY '24, we're anticipating this to be $21.7 million. So what we're experiencing in this is year-over-year growth of about 24% in this tax exempt, this mandated tax exemption program. To put it into additional context, in 2016 was equivalent of .6 cents on the real estate tax rate and 2024 is going to be the equivalent of 3 cents on the real estate tax rate. So the reason for the growth in this program, it's somewhat speculative, but it could be just awareness of the program is catching on, people are becoming more aware of it. Other factors playing a role is the state has changed the parameters of the program a couple of times over the years, allowing localities or allowing spouses to transfer their exemption status whenever they relocate to a different locality. And also, it's quite possible that people are just aging into this exemption. So what I mean by that is if someone at once upon a time was active duty in the military and now they're aging and getting older, based on the way that the calculation happens with the Department of Veteran Affairs, it could be a combination of different components. It could be that they're hearing, they're now experiencing hearing loss and that represents a percentage or knee ache or a loss of mobility. So it's, could be a result of just people aging into it and that's resulting in more people being eligible for this. But it's something that we're certainly mindful of as the sustainability and long-term growth of this at 24% a year is somewhat concerning. We're not the only locality that has this concern. Other localities have requested a VML, take a look at this and request that the state of Virginia look to set aside some funds to help localities cover the cost of this mandated program.
Kevin, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I know that the, there's, one of the metrics is income, but it's been sort of flat. The requirement for, I think it's 30, $30,000 a year, but if they get a bump in their Medicare or, or Social Security, some of those folks have been disqualified because they, they didn't meet the income threshold, they went over it by hundreds of dollars, but they still should be eligible. So who sort of?
For the disabled veteran?
For the, I'm sorry, for the elderly and disabled.
Oh, yes, that, so the elderly and, so that is, every year, as a part of the operating budget ordinance, a committee spearheaded by Councilwoman Henley several years ago put a, parameters in place to where the growth of those income thresholds is supposed to keep up at the same pace as the growth in assessment base for a single-family home. So we actually modify those income thresholds each year as a part of the annual operating budget and I can certainly provide those updated thresholds to you if you'd like.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the elderly aren't being penalized for getting pennies on the dollar just each year, so. Because I know, I know some folks who did not qualify at the income level because they got that bump and the year before they did. So I just want to make sure that that is being monitored.
That's something. And in addition to that, we come back at the require, at the request of the committee, we come back every two years and provide an update on the stats of that and how we compare to the region. Yes, ma'am. Jumping over to personal property, the city's second-largest local revenue source, which totals about $200 million. This is certainly one of our more complex and difficult revenues to project, leading us to be somewhat conservative in our projections of this revenue over the years. There's several different components making up this complexity, different tax rates for vehicle classifications and personal property classifications. You have the fact that probably 80% of this revenue is due in the month of June, or basically the end of the fiscal year, which means at this point in time, we're trying to base our projection two years in advance, which makes it incredibly difficult. Also, something city council's all too familiar with is the volatility in this program. Last March, city council was presented with a problem in which used vehicle values were appreciating at an unprecedented rate. Everybody's typically familiar with, hey, I have a used vehicle, it depreciates over time. Based on land, or not land book, but based on the native valuation, the commercial revenue raised a flag indicating that, hey, some vehicles are appreciating by as much as 40%. So city council acted quickly, authorizing the use of the fair market evaluation approach in which overall assessments were reduced by 25%, resulting in an estimated tax avoidance of about $38 million for residents of Virginia Beach. Going forward, I bring that up because it's important because that's a baseline assumption in our projection of this revenue going forward as the used car market has not yet stabilized and is still somewhat overvalued. So we have assumed the continuation of that program in our future forward-looking projections. So overall, we're anticipating FY '24 growth to be about 6% or about $11 million and then smooth out to about 3% annual growth remaining for years of the forecast. In terms of general sales, Greg stole a lot of my thunder, so I'll give everybody some time back on that one. So this revenue's really grown historically about 3% a year. The last couple of years, for the reasons, very reasons that Greg had mentioned, the Supreme Court ruling, we've seen double-digit growth year-over-year in this revenue stream. We're anticipating, beginning in FY '23, we think we've caught back up, we're in line with the correct glide path on this revenue source. So we're anticipating about 3% growth in FY '24 and for that to continue with the historical norm for the remaining years of the forecast, resulting in about $2 million, $2.5 million a year. And looking at restaurant meals tax, this graph shows restaurant meals tax in total, not only for, for the general fund. And as you can see from the actual trend line on this, it really does tell a story. So back in 2020, you can see that this revenue source underperformed budget. So one of the primary reasons for that is an action, standalone action the city council took to provide meals tax holiday in an effort to provide fiscal relief at the very beginning of the pandemic. So that resulted in FY '20 not quite meeting budget expectations. In FY '21 and '22, this revenue has continued to exceed expectations, experiencing double-digit growth. So for example, the growth between '21 and '23 is about 31% growth, revenue growth. We don't anticipate this trend to continue. We anticipate this beginning in FY '24 to get back to the historical growth trend of about 3%, 3.5% resulting in about $3 million annually in growth in this overall revenue. Same with the hotel tax. I wanted to show this one in total as opposed to just for the, what's within the general fund. It tells a story as well. So similar, you can see it follows the same trend line as restaurant meals tax, where the last couple of years, it's really overperformed and resulted in double-digit growth year-over-year. There's some speculation as to what the driving factors is for this, but we can certainly make some educated guesses. I can certainly say that whenever the budget was, the 2021 budget was adopted, in between the proposed and the ultimate adopted budget, we cut out about $67 million that was programmed for enhanced or plus-up of spending within the following year. One of the things I can tell you that did not get cut out of that was enhanced marketing and advertising funds within the TAP and the TIP fund. So that could have certainly been a contributing factor as Virginia Beach was one of the first tourist destinations to back, open back up during the pandemic. Some other factors contributing to that is the transit occupancy tax, short-term rentals. During course, course of same time span began remitting those sales, or excuse me, those taxes. And also in addition to that, the General Assembly passed legislation closing a loophole associated with third, third-party booking agencies such as Expedia or Travelocity. Previously, prior to the passing of the General Assembly action, they remitted hotel taxes based on what they purchased the room for, not what they ultimately ended up selling the room for themselves. So that could have certainly contributed to a portion of the bump as well. But overall, we're anticipating this revenue source to, this to be the new norm in terms of the baseline and get back on its historical growth trend of about 3% a year, about $2.5 million. Switching over to expenditures, so some of the baseline expenditures.
Kevin, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Before you continue, I just want to, first of all, I want to thank you for your presentation as well. And I want to wish everyone in this room a happy holidays and happy Thanksgiving. Hope you all enjoy your families. This has been an incredibly tough year for a lot of families in this world and in our community, particularly coming out of a pandemic. And so with that, I have about 200 frozen turkeys out there in the parking lot and so I'm going to be leaving shortly to go support our communities and give away food to needy families. And so I, I just wanted to, to thank you all for being here and please don't, don't let my absence think that this is unimportant. I really do think this is important to understand our relationship with our school board and so Dr. Spence, I want to thank you again for all the work that you've done with our schools and on our school board and leading that way with our school board members. And to all those newly elected school board members, congratulations. And to the new elected council people in the room today, congratulations. Hopefully, we can have more school board and council meetings in the near future. Thank you. Yeah, thank. Yeah, thank you, John.
All right. So looking at baseline, five-year forecast, personnel assumptions and expenditures, one of the things we've assumed as a continuation, we've assumed a 3% annual increase in compensation adjustments. This will be in line with the recently implemented step plan approved by city council. Certainly not required that this step plan be implemented in any given year. However, for the purpose of the forecast, we've represented that a 3% increase annually for visualization impact. Some of the other adjustments or assumptions that were made were assumed increased contributions to VRS or assumed VRS rate adjustments to be set by VRS and the state with 1.5% occurring every other year. Another factor we took into account or took into part of our baseline assumptions is growth in overall health insurance of about 3% on employer contribution each year. Something also that I wanted to highlight, and I'm sure Councilmember Moss is certainly going to point out, is that the baseline forecast does not take into account attrition savings. For the purpose of the forecast, personnel have been fully loaded in there and attrition savings has not been taken into account. And I'll speak to that again in just a little bit when I'm around talking about the baseline forecast. Some other things that we took into consideration or made as our, part of our baseline assumption is annual increase 4% to account for, in operating accounts, to account for inflation. 4% in year one and then 3% in the out-years of the forecast. This is in line with the St. Louis Bank-Fed Reserve long-term projection of inflationary impacts. Some other things that were taken into account were known increases, so the annualized costs and plus-up of the police department's operating budget, for example, to cover the Axon body worn camera program, operating costs. And then we also took into account some other increases associated with assumed 10% increase in utilities, gas and utility costs. So taking the baseline expenditures and overlaying those with baseline revenue projections, you can see here are the bottom line. In FY '24, the five-year forecast shows a $6.6 million deficit in year one with years two through four of the forecast being positive and then year five of the forecast turning slightly negative again. And so one of the things, I just want to circle back on the attrition savings and point out, is that the purpose of the five-year forecast is not really to balance the operating budget on any given year, but to put a set of assumptions in place, put our best forward look estimate to some of the revenue, revenue projections and have this conversation begin as, this is really the kickoff point in process of the operating budget. So with that being said, that $6.6 million, it could seem like a lot, especially for those that were, are newly elected and are seeing that. However, I assure you that whenever the city manager's operating budgets put forward for city council's consideration, it will be a balanced, sustainable budget, which could and likely will utilize attrition savings as a balancing tool to, for that budget. So some potential future impacts on the baseline forecast should the assumptions change, obviously inflation. We're mindful of this, not just necessarily on the operating budget side, but also the CIP side as well. Some of the construction contracts that we've been seeing come in are upwards of 30% plus over the original budgeted estimate, so we're being mindful of that and looking to address that as best we can in the upcoming operating budget and CIP process. Obviously, energy costs, I just mentioned that. Debt service, all debt service projections have been updated to assume a 4.5% interest rate. Obviously, that's something we're also mindful of. Should that change, an increase, that could change the overall projection. Our revenue assumptions, should a recession occur, that could impact those or as we get later in the budget process, we also might have a better indication of some of those revenues that need to be modified based on where, how they're trending in the current year. And then also, just to cap it off, just a forward-looking projection. So the upcoming budget that we're working on is the last year of the current existing school funding formula between the cities and schools. So after this upcoming budget process, it'll be time for cities and schools to get together and begin talking about either continuation of the existing formula or revisiting the model and establishing a new formula. So with that being my portion of it, are we going to?
Any other questions at this point, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go to slide 18. And I'd like everybody to remember being here in November of last year when we looked at that very same slide on slide 18, which is the general fund real estate tax revenue. You may recall, there was a subsequent graph after that, or a table, I should say, that showed we were expecting 3.9% increase in real estate taxable tax base in the current budget year, then 3.8, then 3.8, then 3.8, and I think it was 3.3 in the last year. So if you look at this chart, it now shows that we're, we actually experienced 9.3, 9.29 to be exact, but give me the 1/10th for purposes of discussion, which was 5.4% over what we thought it would be. And we have supposedly spent every single nickel, even though families are struggling. If you go to 7.8, which is your projection, I believe, for next year, the actual collectible tax, I think that's correct, that would be 4% over and above what it was a year ago in additional revenue. I don't know, I didn't see a 4% increase in most families' income being forecasted and I didn't think we saw that impact. I just bring that up because these, when you look at these in isolation without reference to the change from last year, you don't realize how much more money this is relative to the people. people that pay it. So I think that's an omission. And we don't have a chart that shows families' energy costs from wind and the energy costs from this and this and how their budgets have a deficit. The inflation tax on the average family is, depending on who you talk to, is $5,500 to $7,000 deficit in their purchasing power. I think we all need to see that and know what families are dealing with when I knocked on doors. But I want to go back to in your report, because it wasn't mentioned in the slide specifically, but on page four of the introduction, it reads, oh my God, the general fund debt service, I mean, this is excluding enterprise funds and trustee accounts. When you say general fund, is that a correct interpretation of general fund on that page?
General government, yes, sir.
Says is held flat across the five-year period. So that means that we think by putting the 4.5 interest rate, which is probably a little higher than we'll actually experience, if we look at what we typically pay over the treasury note, the treasury notes not expected to increase by more than, more than 4% is the current forecast during this period of time. So I would like to note a future date for every 50 basis points under your 4.5, what is the savings? Because it seems strange to me that when we had our discussions with the debt service people and we looked at the spike level and how to restructure maybe our out-year, part of the six-year period for, for the stormwater management, we were looking at interim financial measures. So I'd like to understand what assumptions relative to that discussion from bond council play into that statement. I've never seen that statement before in a five-year forecast report. I'd like to better understand what that means and what does that mean about other debt? Are we going to push up other debt from trustee accounts like the TIP fund, more money investment in the oceanfront and less invested in the homeland? I'm not certain what the consequences of that statement are and what does it mean relative to the schools' demand for capital? And can that be accommodated? Or are we sending a subtle message that it's not going to be accommodated? I just don't understand that statement. But a later date, if you could explain that.
Yes, sir.
And I want to come back to when you look at the slides on taxes, this was on restaurant and sales. If you could do the same thing that the state did on slide 22, I believe it was, where they showed the constant dollar and showed while the, while the nominal rate increase was fairly high, the constant, real constant dollar increase was less than 1%. I think that would be helpful to know because in some cases, if you talk to restaurant owners, they're not selling more meals, they're just paying more tax because the meals they serve cost more. And so it gives you a misleading about economic activity that takes place and better explains why restaurants are closing. I just think this gives you a mistaken view of how strong the economy is. So I would like to see if we could see that. And then coming back to your baseline assumptions, was this St. Louis number a nominal number or real number?
So it's, it's the, whenever we go and we were looking at the Federal Reserves, it's a report that they put out. They put that, I believe, I think it's nominal, but I can certainly follow up.
Yeah. And getting back to this health insurance, because that's a big cost growth. I know many people who are out there in the private sector seeing 6.8 and 9% increases in premiums to the employees themselves. That's not uncommon. So does this make the assumption that the city taxpayers will continue to absorb the employer, employee share as we have for the last eight or nine years?
So this just represents the employer's contribution. The employee's contribution would be taken up annually as a part of the benefits executive committee. So it's kind of a year-to-year decision based on the overall, as well as the use and the increased contribution by the employers based on the overall fund balance of the health and the health fund.
Well, for the incoming council members, I think they probably want to know since historically we have eaten that cost, that probably it would be well-known to know what that potential bill is. Because we, I never, the last eight or nine years, we've paid it, not saying that's good, better and different, but full disclosure would say to know what that is. Do we expect this assume 1.5? Since I'm sure the VRS has had the same issue that people personally had with a 25 to 30% decrement in their asset base, do we think that this 1.5 is really an honest number?
So based on the latest information we have, which it was updated in the current year, our long-term projections, we were pretty close in line with it. If you recall, it was this week last year that I was presenting this, and then VRS came out and released the rate that same day. We weren't too far off. I think we were within half a percent of our initial estimates. One of the things VRS does is they can change it quite a bit. So either they can assume higher rate on their long-term portfolio returns or in other years, they've changed the methodology in turn, in assuming individuals are living longer. So it's kind of difficult to say, but it's, for the most part, it's a pretty safe, long-term estimate and conservative putting it in place.
And the last point I'll make, Mr. Mayor, because I know time is important, but this is one I always talk about, is we, I don't know, I didn't get my latest report for, I guess that'll come next week after Thanksgiving on what our vacancy rate was as of end of October. But as the one for the end of September, it was 824 positions, which is roughly $2 million plus a payroll that we tax people for, that we didn't spend it for the purpose it was taken. So this represents to the incoming council members taxing for something that we know we can't achieve. And we're taking money and then at the end of the year saying we've got this big $20 million, $50 million, $100 million surplus, when the bulk of that money on the city side comes from unexecution of payroll for positions we had no chance of filling. So I really hope that people do use some kind of attrition. All businesses do, it's a best practice. So I, it's hard to believe we have a basic baseline assumption that doesn't represent base, at least best practice. It seems to me so that I think there's some room here. And lastly, every year we have these gaps. Well, my last observation, since I'd like people to be able to buy their own turkeys so that we, someone else doesn't have to buy them for them. But we have a lot of people in stress having to buy turkeys because we're overtaxing people and we're not giving them tax relief. And this, they have gaps bigger than this on a percentage basis. So I, I hope to my partners here that we don't lose sight of who earns the money we spend, and they could take, they could give you a brief on their household budget that looks much more gloomy than this. And I, I think there's room to be, us to be more gracious and have tax relief. And there's no one more supportive of tax structure reform than myself because taxing wealth has nothing to do with what people, what people make. And that's, I think, the struggle Ms. Miles was talking about. People are in their homes, they want to retire in place. They're not poor enough to get help, but they're not wealthy enough to be able to buy groceries and medicine at the same time. And, and we've got to, we've got to work on that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anyone else?
Good afternoon. I've been asked to talk a little bit about the Waste Management Enterprise Fund. This fund is what we use to fund our refuse collection. I'm sorry. I suppose I should. My name is LJ Hanson. I'm the Director of Public Works for the City of Virginia Beach. I've been asked to talk a little bit about the Waste Management Enterprise Fund. This fund is used to fund collections, disposal, recycling and the operation of the regional, or not the regional landfill, but the Virginia Beach landfill. A little bit about the fund itself was originally founded in 2011, 2012. It has been supplanted by the general fund for a number of years. That process ended in 2018 for the purposes of funding of disposal. After 2018, we have received some funds from general fund, but that was for the purchase of vehicles. It has never truly sustained itself to date, though, I should point that out. The current rate is at $25 a month per household, and we have about 124,000 customers. A big driver, the big drivers for this fund are, of course, disposal, collections and recycling. The first bullet point here, as we talk about drivers and potential impacts to the fund, relate to recycling. We're very fortunate in Virginia Beach to have been one of the last agencies to lock in a low rate with our current provider, which is TFC. Following our locking into the rate, there was a significant change in the recycling commodities market, and that really changed the structure. Almost without exception, our other localities that utilize TFC are paying about $4.95 a month per house. We are currently paying $2.85 a month per house. So we have what could be termed a sweetheart deal, but that will come to an end in July of 2024. So we therefore have to account for the fact that if we anticipate keeping curbside recycling, we're going to need to account for that. And we've budgeted that to be about a $4 million increase. The second bullet point here is another bullet, is another issue that is specifically facing us. The current rate per ton for solid waste disposal at SIPSA is $65 a ton. The anticipated rate per ton over the next five years are, anticipated to increase and then decrease, and I'll explain that in just a moment, but it'll go from $65 a ton to $69 a ton, $77 a ton, then down to 65, 52 and 53. The reason for this is because SIPSA, when it refounded, does not have the ability to issue debt. And they are in the middle of a couple of capital programs that are requiring them to cash fund a significant CIP project, specifically the flyover at the regional landfill located in Suffolk. So as a result, in order to be able to fund that, they have to adjust the tip rate. So what we're going to see is we're going to see a spike and then it's going to come back down. There are some other CIP projects that'll wind up coming on the back end of that. There are changes in what's happening at the regional level with how we're handling waste. It's a little bit too early to know exactly what's going to happen. The projections that I have are only the projections that SIPSA has given us to date with the information that we know. But in order to account for that, we are going to show that in our projections. Additionally, equipment replacement is another issue that we know that we're going to have to deal with. We just placed an order for five refuse trucks. Those refuse trucks, we paid $363,000 per refuse truck. In July, one year ago, July 21, we bought them for $279,000. In 2015, they were $250,000. So we cannot function without refuse trucks. We know that, but we have to account for the impact that that's going to make in our, in our program. Additionally, recent changes into our salary structure, CDL stipend increases and other, other factors that we need to be able to be competitive have to be factored into, into what it is that we're doing. We're currently in the process of conducting a rate study so that we can determine exactly where that rate should be and what the overall health of our program will be beyond. As Kevin mentioned, this is not a budget statement, this is just a projection. We need to identify what the risks are. City council has been very clear about letting us know that, that we want to know what the risks are, we want to know what those factors are. We will, of course, have a budget and we will, we will propose a balanced budget when the time comes, but it would be irresponsible of us not to show you what those impacts of the things that I just discussed are. If you'll notice in fiscal year '27, if you, if you're looking at the unfortunate, the red along the bottom, if you notice in fiscal year '27, it drops back down to $2.3 million. And that's as a direct result of the fact that the SIPSA flyover will be paid off and we'll start to see a reduction in the amount of rate that we're paying per ton. That's all I have on solid waste. I'll talk briefly about stormwater. If you have any questions on solid waste, I'd take those now.
Okay, any?
Just one. I assume that the difference, the delta on slide 33 includes all the baseline assumptions, VRS, fully funding, all that in that number.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just, I appreciate that. And for my colleagues who come after us, when we were adopting the budget, that we found the dollars to pay the pay and do the things, these out-year consequences of those choices were not identified at that time. And so in the future, you might want to make sure that when people tell you, you can do lots of things today, be sure to ask them how much that costs me tomorrow because that information wasn't provided. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have just a couple of brief slides on the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. The Stormwater Enterprise Fund is in what I could best term a dynamic state. As a result of the flood protection program, we've changed some of the ways that we're handling what we're doing on the stormwater side. The flood protection program itself, which is the capital part of our flood program, is being paid for through the flood protection program and is handled in a, in a separate part of the budget at this point. But the stormwater utility is actually being used to fund the regulatory programs and the operating costs of maintenance and the traditional parts of the program in that regard. However, there's still a component that, that remains from the CIP that was forecast and projected and prepared prior to the adoption of the flood protection program. So there, there's still a component of CIP, but it is not what we're going in the, in the future. It's important to note that city council adopted a six-year, three-and-a-half cent annual rate increase that was suspended. So in addition to suspending it at the passing of the flood protection program, it was also frozen. So from that standpoint, we know that there's not going to be any growth other than the growth of additional ERUs that are, that come through development or whatever comes as a result of the two-and-a-half cent property dedication. We are fortunate, though, that we did see $44 million worth of investment come as a, as a result of the ARPA or the American Rescue Plan. That money will continue to move through the system until about, until about '26, till about the end of the program. We were making great progress on the program, but that money is going to continue to work its way through. And in fact, we, we have a couple of neighborhoods that are going to be updated and some BMPs. So that does help on the, on the overall, help us improve maintenance. But with regards to money coming from the stormwater utility itself, it's not making much of a difference. And then it's also important to note that we do have a slight reserve on that, on that fund that will probably help us, not that probably, that will help us to be able to balance budgets and, and make those ends meet. But we're mindful that we are going to have some gaps as we get closer to the end of that five-year cycle. And with that, you can see exactly what we're, what we're talking about. Fiscal year '24, we think that we're fine. We will start to see some projected differences as we get into '25, '26, '27 and '28. I told you my comments would be brief on this one. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions at all, John?
Oh, but I just want to make sure the public knows, I think it was in the 2019, 20 budget, I know the city manager might correct me, it was before his arrival here, we did transfer $8 million of labor cost out of the stormwater management fee into the general fund so that we would only be paying for product and not paying for labor with the fund. I just think that's important for people to remember. That was an increase, of course, that's $8 million every year plus what it would have been. So I don't want that to get lost in the process. And also freezing the stormwater management fee was part of our communication and commitment to the public when 72% committed to the bond referendum itself. So I don't want that, that commitment that we made to, to get lost. And while there's a risk to every commitment, I mean, I think that's a promise made is a promise kept. But thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You got it. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So next, Bob Monague, the Director of Public Utilities.
Well, good afternoon. As Kevin said, I'm Bob Monague. I'm Director of Public Utilities, and I'm here to share with you some information with respect to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund five-year forecast. So immediately getting into this, you see that we're showing some, some deficits. I'm sorry, I went backwards here. Okay, this makes more sense for me. I pressed the right button. All right, a few operational highlights. So this starts off with, with the good news. The Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund continues to remain in full compliance with the services that, that we deliver in terms of quality drinking water and full compliance with EPA requirements for sewer collection. Just as a matter of scale, I put a few numbers up here. We conduct 7,300, over 7,300 water quality samples. We conduct 7,300, over 7,300 water quality samples annually to ensure that the water going through our distribution system in Virginia Beach remains top quality. We have about 135,000 accounts throughout the city, so we're reading those meters monthly and mailing about 1.6 million billing statements each and every year. You see here, we also respond to about 3,000 sewer stoppages annually, as well as about 126,000 calls that are coming into our call center. The status of our enterprise fund right now, right now, we're undergoing a cost of services study. Key considerations and challenges for the, the utility, minimal growth. As Greg was mentioning earlier, not a tremendous amount of growth in, in our area in terms of utilities. We've seen about a 4% increase in terms of customers we serve since 2011. Another challenge is that a significant percentage of our budget, it could be classified as fixed cost. We have a, a contract with the City of Norfolk for the treatment of our, of our water, as well as a sales agreement that accounts for 25% of our operating budget. You've heard this from us before, but as a maturing city, aging infrastructure becomes more and more of a challenge to try to keep up with, and the vast majority of our capital plan is targeted towards, towards aging infrastructure. Right now, we're also seeing the impacts of inflation. Our, our bids on average this year so far have come in at 48% above our engineer's estimate, which is, is the most I've seen during my almost 30-year career in public utilities. As a part of that, we're seeing a very competitive contractor market in utilities. Our contractors tend to be very specialized. They tend to be the, the same firms in the region competing for the work. And it's, it's very competitive in terms of the bids that we're seeing coming in from them, and not in a good way. We're also dealing with increased risk management costs, personnel costs, and, and new regulatory requirements. The EPA did a revision to the lead and copper rule, which is geared towards ensuring that our customers are protected in terms of no lead in, in their drinking water. These revisions are having a big impact on utilities across the nation, where one of the requirements is we have to do a system-wide inventory of service lines, which is very expensive and represents about a $1.6 million increase to our operating budget. So here, I wanted to, to show you a, a couple of slides demonstrating our rate history. Our rates have been very stable for over a decade now. Our water rate last went up, and the, the table to the left shows our water commodity rate, which is the rate per thousand gallons. Our water charge also includes a water service availability fee, which has remained stable throughout the timeframe that we're looking at here. And then a sanitary sewer charge, which is, is a monthly fixed charge. The last increase to the, to our water commodity rate was in FY '20, and that was associated with the new water services and sales agreement with the City of Norfolk. So that rate was, that rate increase was solely geared towards recovering the additional costs associated with that new agreement. And then our sanitary sewer charge has been the same going back all the way through fiscal year 2014. One of the things that has enabled stability with that rate is there was a schedule of rate increases that were to address mandates under the regional consent order that were requiring a, a significant increase to our capital plan at the time. Since then, HRSD assumed some of those responsibilities regionally for those mandates, which enabled us to slow down the expected rate of growth of our CIP, which enabled us to, to keep that rate stable over the years. But as time has gone on, one of the things that really impacts us is the fact that we have very limited growth, and our operating expenses are going up, and it's catching up with us at this point. So this slide is, is showing our forecasted revenues versus expenditures. You see in FY '24, we're projecting a, a deficit of just under $6 million, and then it's rising 3% a year through, through the out-years. And just to offer some conclusions and next steps, the five-year forecast is, is a high-level trend indicator. It's, it's really assuming that we're collecting all revenues and that we're expending all of those as well. We have some, definitely have some rooms on the margin. We're doing a, as I mentioned before, a cost of service study right now to help us determine appropriate recommended rate increases. Again, some of, some of our drivers are the fact that operating expenses have increased significantly. The largest discretionary portion of our expenses is our capital program. And as I mentioned, the year that we're in right now, bids coming in at 48% above the engineer's estimate is, is definitely a driver for us. Again, our revenue growth has been relatively flat. I think when I got to utilities back in 1993, our average daily demand was at about 30 million gallons per day. Fast forward to 2022, and we're at about 31 million gallons a day. So the, the growth has been very flat. Part of that is just not a lot of new customers added to the system. Part of it is water-efficient washing machines, showerheads, and things like that that have, have kept our demand in check. I'll, I'll mention that the preliminary information coming in from our cost of service study is consistent with our five-year forecast, where it's definitely indicating the need for rate increases. And we will plan to integrate those increases once we finalize the cost of service study with our FY '24 budget submission. So that's what I planned to cover for today. I'll take any, any questions?
Any questions?
John, do you have a question? I want to get back to, this has come up several times, and I think demographics are going to draw it to come up more often. Our household size over time has decreased. And we always hear about this thing about HRSD charges you by how much water you use, not by the day. And I know we've been this before, but I would, I would, I would request that my colleagues, as they look at this, we go back and re-look at and see if the demographics haven't changed, if we're trying to drive and allocate cost to the user, that we go back to basing the sewer rate on consumption. I realize the net money is still the same. I understand all that. But who pays it and who subsidizes who does change. And I heard many, and I know I'm not the only one who hear from people who have very small water uses but are being charged on a daily basis. And there's nothing, there's no price incentive to people to deal with consumption when it's a constant price. So I would advise that you look at that again. You mentioned the cost driver as being risk management increases. Could you expand on what about the risks that were occurring that would cause your risk management charge to increase? What is that?
Well, there's an indirect cost plan that we receive every year where the general fund support departments allocate a portion of, of their cost to the enterprise fund. We had some residual impacts from the 531 event that were assessed to utilities. So we had a significant number of costs after that. Part of that, we, we relocated our entire on-campus workforce out to, to Lynn Haven and then just a number of other related costs from that event, people who were injured. So those costs end up getting allocated to the departments.
Mr. City Manager, if I could, I would like to have a more detailed accounting broken down as to what was really charged off the risk management relative to what the scope of the risk management fund pool is supposed to pay. I'd be interested in that.
Mr. Moss, just some of the other expenses that, that we will receive if we had a, a failure, a fault in the system that perhaps impacted a customer in terms of damage to their house. Those are other expenses, and those, those can vary pretty significantly from year to year.
I'm just trying to get educated.
Sure.
When you say it's a risk driver and it's changed, I'm just trying to understand what's changed and why does that change? Are we just restoring from past, or does that represent a, a one-time surcharge? Or is that a recurring fee that would go on forever?
Yes, sir.
Just a one-time versus? And then you talked a little bit, I think this is really important. What is the aquifer offset? You know, this was the big thing. HRSD is talking about recharging the aquifer out in, I think it was in the Isle of Wight, and I think in maybe up by Franklin or Suffolk, two places, they were going to be recharging the aquifer. And there was going to be a fairly substantial consent decree offset from that. Do we, can, at later date, could you just share with me what actually is the dollar value that we actually avoided having to do because of the credit we're getting for their aquifer restoration? I'd like to know that.
That, that might be more of a public works. I, I think you're talking about the, the offset of the, the credits that they're getting from the reduced nutrients that they're?
Or whatever they were getting, because they're cleaning, but you mentioned about offset, and I'm just trying to understand how that offset related to the sewage part. I'm just trying to understand how that works. Because they're cleaning the water to a higher standard, which they are, to put it back in the ground. I'd just like to know what that is and what, versus what we thought. That's just a small thing, I think. And the other part I'd mention, this is an area where we can't really defer maintenance. Deferred maintenance will be our Achilles' heel. It's true for a lot of places. But what we can do, this is for the city manager and my colleagues to come, is to offset these increases that are fixed costs, just like homeowners, that we can't avoid because the penalty down the road is too high, by offsetting increases in the operating budget of other places to make the budget more operating neutral, since all these bills get paid by residents and business. So they're, they're, but they're, if you use it, you pay. But we can't really afford to let and not do maintenance. That will come back to bite us in a big way. So I encourage that we find a way to make sure that we're not increasing the backlog on maintenance. We saw what happened when we did that for decades with stormwater and those ditches and the plaz and other places. And we're still, no pun intended, digging ourselves out from that. So let's not, let's not repeat that history. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Crystal Page. I'm Chief Financial Officer for the School Division. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you this afternoon. Just going to take a quick few minutes to highlight some items in the document, concentrating mainly on our school operating budget only. There certainly is more information in your document than what I will cover in this presentation that underlies the work that we do. And as you know, as has been mentioned several times this afternoon, this forecast is based on estimates, and it's based on the best information we have available at the time it's prepared. Certainly, from an education standpoint, we gain insight into the state budget when the governor prepares to revise the economic forecast for the two-year budget, typically released around the third week of December. Local contributions, I'm going to go over some key budget assumptions for revenue. Local contributions calculated using the local revenue sharing formula continue to be the most substantial source of revenue for the School Division. The Commonwealth of Virginia provides the next largest source of revenue through basic aid, categorical programs, incentive programs, lottery funds, and sales tax revenues. There are also remaining revenues are obtained from federal and other local sources. So student enrollment continues to be lower than pre-pandemic levels. And looking at the projected student membership, we are averaging about 63,350 students throughout the forecast period. There's a small decrease from '22, '23 to '23, '24, and to '24, '25. Then we see a small increase going into the fiscal year '25, '26, and only to see that go back down into '26, '27, and '27, '28. Certainly, these enrollment projections in the forecast are based on preliminary estimates of our demographer, and they're not considered final, and they certainly can change in either direction affecting revenue and expenditures estimates that are presented today. So even with the lower enrollment projections, what we are seeing are increases in certain student populations, like our English language learners, our students impacted by poverty, our students receiving special education services, students with social, emotional needs, and an overall learning loss for students. Students' needs post-pandemic, as evidenced by learning loss and an increase in the student categories I just mentioned, are expected to have an increasing impact on the resources of the School Division as the Division tries to ensure that students are connected to learning and achieving at the highest level. The local revenue sharing formula projected by the city, based on their analysis of the various revenue streams, shows local revenue is projected to increase 5.9% for '23, '24, 5.3% for '24, '25, 3.8% for '25, '26, and then 2.4% for the remaining two years of the forecast period. Other local revenue is derived from miscellaneous sources such as tuition, fees, facility rentals, sale of salvage materials and capital assets, lost and stolen technology, the Stop Arm Program, et cetera. We're not expected to see any increases in many of these revenue streams. We are projected a $75,000 increase each year to account for expected increase in revenue received from the Stop Arm Enforcement Program. As mentioned earlier, state revenues include funding for basic aid, standards of quality, categorical incentive and lottery programs. State revenue and sales tax numbers, sales tax numbers will come from the Virginia Department of Education's '23, '24 calculation tool after the governor releases his budget, which we are expecting an approximate 4.7% increase. We are projecting a moderate increase in state revenue over the remaining forecast period of 3%. State sales tax continues to rise. However, for November, that was the first time in a while that we saw a decrease in that month from the prior November, prior year in November. So right now, we are, for each year of the forecast, we show a moderate increase over the five-year period of 2%. The primary source of federal revenue in the operating budget within is federal impact aid. And due to a fairly stable enrollment over the five-year forecast period, we made no changes to the projected revenue, leaving it at $13.5 million for each year of the forecast. The School Reserve Special Revenue Fund represents a one-time reversion fund used to augment the school operating budget and pay for recurring expenses. Use of these funds to pay for ongoing costs has, creates a structural imbalance, requiring recurring revenue to resolve. We have been able to eliminate a good portion of this reserve over the last few years, and the use of one-time funds to balance the school operating budget is planned to be eliminated by the fiscal year '25, '26. Expenditures are expected to grow over the forecast period primarily due to compensation, rising healthcare costs, inflation, debt service, and the impact on resources to serve our changing population of students, as well as addressing learning loss. The expenditure assumptions are the compensation increase for '23, '24 is 5%, and that's predicated on the governor's budget, and then 3% each year for the remaining forecast period. Beginning with fiscal year '23, '24, we did have to build into the budget salary increases for bus drivers and an increase in substitute pay that we currently have budgeted in our RPSR funds federal grant. For the VRS employer rate, we are projecting to increase 1% every other year of the forecast period. And as the city mentioned, employer health insurance rates, we're projecting to increase that by 3% for each of the forecast period. Non-personnel line items reflect an increase for inflation of 4% for fiscal year '23, '24, and 3% for each remaining year of the forecast. Pay go into CIP, we're projecting to increase $1 million for fiscal year '23, '24, and then $500,000 each year of the remaining forecast period in an effort to reduce reliance on debt service. As some of you know, the School Division put out a Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act, also known as a PPEA request for proposal after receiving an unsolicited PPEA proposal for the replacement of Princess Anne High School, Betty F. Williams Bayside 6, and Bayside High School. The School Division is working through this process with the goals of realizing cost savings with efficiencies related to a design-build-delivery model and earlier completion of projects, estimated to result in cost savings related to avoiding years of inflation. The decision on entering an interim agreement is on council's agenda for February 21, 2023. And if the interim agreement moves forward, the next step in the PPEA process would be a comprehensive agreement with a guaranteed maximum price for the three projects. One of the pressing questions regarding this delivery model is the potential impact on debt service costs for the School Division. And based on an extremely preliminary guaranteed maximum price estimate, city budget staff modeled the impact of the PPEA on debt service. I do not have a slide to show you, but it is in I do not have a slide to show you, but it is in the combined document on pages 82 and 83 that does show what that projection is and what that impact would be on our variances. In addition, there is a reversion revenue sharing resolution that's recently been approved by School Board that includes $10.5 million for Princess Anne High School replacement, $7.5 million for Betty F. Williams' Bayside Six replacement, and $4.8 million for Bayside High School replacement. There is a required city public hearing scheduled December 6th, and the resolution is scheduled to be presented to City Council on December 13th. This additional infusion of funds into these projects is not accounted for in the model of the debt service impact of the PPEI I just mentioned. If the resolution is approved by City Council, we will plan to work with city budget staff to update the debt service impact and continue to update as long as the PPEA process moves forward. The last item I'm going to mention that will impact future budgets is compensation. We continue to face a tough job market. The decline in applicants for advertised positions across many departments is still a reality. Due to recent recruitment and retention incentives mainly funded with federal grant funding, we have seen some improvement in addressing vacancies with bus drivers, custodians, food service workers, and teachers. While we saw a decrease in the number of instructional positions with the start of the school year, the vacancies, they have increased as the year has progressed, and we still see a shrinking pool of newly-trained teachers. As we work to ensure we are meeting the minimum wage benchmarks outlined each year by the Commonwealth of Virginia, the goal is to ensure employees are making a minimum of $15 per hour by the year 2026 and not sooner. The minimum wage changes over the next three years will significantly impact the unified experience-based step pay scale. Many employers in the Commonwealth have already moved to $15 minimum hourly rate, affecting our ability to hire positions such as custodians, cafeteria assistants, bus assistants, as well as others. The Division is working with a consultant to conduct a compensation study of jobs on the unified experience-based step pay scale, as well as review the competitiveness of the instructional experience-based step pay scale. Recommendations from this study will be reviewed for implementation during the budget development process for '23, '24, and at this time, it is not possible to assign cost projections to the possible outcome of the project, and therefore not included in this five-year forecast. As we continue to work to enhance our recruitment and retention strategies, improve our competitive position in the market, and hire staff to meet the needs of our students, BBCPS remains committed to meeting these challenges. So based on the revenue and expenditure assumptions outlined, not taking into account the PPA debt service impact, the School Division is projecting a deficit in the first year of the forecast mainly due to the 5% raise to all employees and the inclusion of the reclassification of bus drivers to a highly-competitive pay grade and compensation for bus driver trainees, including health benefits and the increase in our substitute pay currently being funded in our ARPESR III grant. For '24, '25, and '25, '26, we are showing small surpluses with return to projected deficits in '26, '27, and '27, '28. There are several variables impacting these outer years. We do see where expenditure assumptions are remaining fairly stable, where the local contribution increases decline over the outer years of the forecast. As you know, there are many unknowns at the time of this projection, such as mandates, state funding levels, and new school board priorities. The school system continues to face some significant challenges in the coming years. The main risk factors are employee compensation and workforce challenges, enrollment and student learning needs, and the changes in state budget. These items are not easily forecasted, nor are their effects on the revenues and expenditures. We also recently received an update from our facilities and maintenance services team regarding some of our other renovation and replacement needs included in our six-year CIP plan, such as HVAC, re-roofing, and foundation repairs. This is an area where funding limitations and the impact of inflation needs to be considered regarding our ability to maintain and replace our facility assets. Just to provide you with some context, for HVAC, there is $63.5 million appropriated and are programmed over six years, which equates to about 25% of the six-year estimated need. We've also secured $24.5 million in grant funding over that six-year period. For re-roofing, there is $42.3 million appropriated and/or programmed over six years, which equates to about 50% of the six-year estimated need, and that currently is supplemented with about .7 million of grant funding. We also have a various CIP project, which includes foundation repairs, ADA improvements, ceiling case work and fire alarm replacements, lighting, masonry repairs, and other emergency renovations. There is $19.65 million appropriated and are programmed over six years, which equates to about 25% of the six-year estimated need. We currently have identified $9.4 million just in foundation repairs at three schools, and that is coming in at approximately 48% of the $19.65 million. So these areas are essential needs to help ensure a safe and effective learning environment for our students. So we believe adequate funding is essential to the school system's success, especially in light of the staffing challenges, compensation, and we currently face, as well as maintenance of facilities. As VCPS continues to evaluate the effects of the pandemic on our students and families, VCPS is dedicated to charting course for each individual student that includes inclusive, meaningful learning experiences, along with the social-emotional support and skill building that will prepare them for long-term success. And that concludes my part of the presentation. We got to answer any questions.
Rosemary?
Thank you, Crystal, for a very concise, well-done report. Your reserve fund, how much is in the reserve fund now?
The School Special Reserve, it's about $16.2 million.
And besides putting that into the following year's budget, what else are you using that money for?
Currently, right now, we've only been using it to structurally balance the budget when we try to budget it, and then we're trying to be aware of that. Otherwise, that money right now is, it was originally set up for like, you know, a contingency fund back when things were really tight, and so that was why that fund was set up. And so I guess over the years, they put money into it, and then if we had reversion at the end of the year, they tried to put that money back.
Right. Okay, and I'm looking forward to reading the report as to how much the debt service is going to be for the PPEA. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? John?
And for the 60% of Americans who can't find $400 of cash in a month for an emergency, I'm glad we have a reserve. And reserves are good, but families would like one, too. But is the $63 million that you have available at the state to draw upon, is that included in your baseline numbers?
That's a federal grant, if that's what you're referring to.
Yes, the one the governor talked about.
That is not in these numbers. Those are federal grants, they're in a separate fund, and so they are within your document. So right now, the balance is about $63 million. $1.8 million of that is what's our SRR II, and that money can be expended and encumbered up through 9/30 of 2023. And then there's $61 million of an $82.5 million award, and that is available to us to expend or encumber through 9/30 of 2024.
I saw that memo. What I want to ask is, when we look at your number, your funding profile, with your deficit, that $63 million isn't in there?
You're correct, because it's in a separate fund.
The reason why I mention it, because your narrative relative to that deficit talked about COVID impact, learning that we didn't take place, fact that our reading level's down, our math competency, reading grade levels down, but all those are things that $63 million is allowed to address. So it seems to me, if I'm looking at a requirement, and I'm saying I have a deficit and I'm citing these issues, I would be attributing how I'm taking $63 million that I'm not accounting for on that line, and how that money is being used to address that requirement that takes pressure off local taxpayers. And I'd be interested in seeing that profile at a later date. The other thing is, you have consistently under-executed your budget over decades. I mean, it's not new. And the reason why I'm asking, and I'm assuming these $48 million of reversion fund is also not included in your baseline since council hasn't acted, is that correct?
That's correct.
So when the public is looking at your baseline, and you say you have a deficit of $4 million, you're not taking into account this at all?
And we wouldn't, not until it's approved.
Well, good. Well, then that means you only need 4.8 million of this 48 million to resolve your operating deficit.
Again, those are estimates in forecasting, and we all have talked about that.
I hope it's not that much off, because that's a lot between 4.8 and 48. That's a big 10 times off. But I'd just like to go back and review, if I could, just what you're asking for, and hopefully, first I heard that we were voting, and I thought this is a decision that the next school board might want to opine on, and this next council might like to have a vote on this much amount of money. It's more than 1%. But you under-executed your budget by $15.7 million. You had unspent debt service of 3.8. You had additional revenues from appropriated funds, and then we had over-performance of money, meaning on the city's side and the state's school board's side, we collected $27.2 million more than we actually appropriated. Now, the city's got a number just about as big as this, it's $100 million bucks, and that's the point I'm making to my colleagues who come behind me, is that's $100 million of taxpayers' money. So where's the reversion in tax relief? And if your deficit is only 4.8 million, and you spent over a number of years 22.7 million on turf fields for high schools while foundations were failing and HVACs weren't being replaced, I just don't know how you set your priorities. But this tells you that there's room, my colleagues here, to give some money back and not take, maybe there's some risk, but you just said you only had a $4.8 million deficit, but you're asking for $48 million. I look forward to the explanation and writing. Thank you.
Katie, thank you.
Thank you. My question has to do with the population projection, so this may be a school and a city question. So it's anticipated that our population will increase, it says perhaps 3% by 2030, although we saw a decrease last year. And then our projected and actual student enrollment, we did lose, we lost over 3,000 students over COVID that never returned to our division. When the demographer, these numbers that are in our packet on page 77, are these update, like, how long ago were these projected numbers updated?
For our student enrollment, she's recently projected those numbers, so they're fairly recent off 9/30, so she's been projecting those out, and she will continue to do that as we do the verification counts for students.
And so that factored in the 3,000 that we had lost over COVID?
Correct. We lost those from 2021 down to 2022. You could see that 3,000, it just kind of never picked back up from there.
So when we're looking at the population projection, we're looking at the numbers of, it says that the population is expected in those age groups to decrease, even though the overall population is increasing. That's something that's factored in to the demographics?
Not in, no. We are just strictly looking at student enrollment, because that's how we get, one of our funding, way we get funded.
Okay, so this number, page 77, projected and actual student enrollment does not factor in the projected population that's in the city document?
No, that's correct.
And why wouldn't we do that?
I wouldn't, because we only really look at student enrollment. I mean, I'm sure the demographer looks at that information in order to do a prediction of what we expect to have new births and what age groups they will actually enter into the public school system. So I'm sure in that way, it's incorporated, but as far as what budget does, I don't incorporate that. But I'm sure the demographer looks at that, as well as some other things, in order to get those figures.
Do we have a way of knowing how many children we have who are of school age total compared to how many are enrolled in our division?
I can check. I certainly can check and get back with you on that. I would think I'll have to check base with her and get back.
I'm interested in seeing what the trend line is.
Sure. I understand. Okay, we'll get back with you on that.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Sabrina?
I just have a comment. And while I do appreciate the setting in which we are discussing this very important matter, the budget, and especially for our schools, I would like to delve a little bit deeper into some of the issues, especially when it comes to the school's budget, to really look at some of those needs that are very apparent. Is it possible, Mayor, that we could follow up on a more in-depth discussion on the school's budget and their needs, perhaps during our staff retreat? I think that would be maybe a form where we can talk a bit more in-depth about a lot of these issues and concerns.
I think, you know, that would be prudent and planned, and especially, you know, we have five new members joining us on council, that, you know, there certainly would be helpful, you know, have them caught up on, you know, the major issues, especially, you know, since the significance and of importance and, you know, the impact on our budget and everything. So, you know, that would be in line. And then, once again, also to get the, you know, two bodies together, maybe on a little bit more frequent basis, you know, perhaps even quarterly, to, you know, make sure we're aware of each other's priorities.
I think that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anyone else?
Hey, folks, thank you all for your participation. We are retiring.